Okay, because it's already in the back window under the.
Yes, it's already pre-figured into the meeting.
Got you. Okay, so that's what will happen for the meetings for next week.
Yes, as long as I know about them in advance.
Right. Well, no, I'm in some, I need to send you those, I'm going to send you those before I leave here today.
Okay. All right, and now, and now you can do your thing. Do you need me to jump into the meeting for any reason and just monitor, or are you good?
I think I should be okay. So I just, I just pause the recording at the end.
Um, the, uh, no, everything will automatically.
All right, okay. Welcome to the work session now. All right. Guess we'll give everybody a minute or two to get in here. I think, I think there was some trouble with the, uh, the invites. I think one might have had a wrong date or so on it. Um, and then I know I think there, there's some confusion about which one to use, uh, between the two, but. Um, we'll just give everybody a minute, I guess, Mr. Chair, to get in here and then we'll, we'll get, get underway.
Sounds good.
And because we were expecting a potential quorum, um, we are, it says it's going to be on the YouTube and all that jazz. Let's do this. I think this is everybody we just had at the special called. So I think we can probably just go ahead and, and get started, Mr. Chair. Um, versus waiting. So, um, so we really wanted to, to make sure we got in a, a work session with you all, relatively quickly here, um, prior to the next meeting. Since we have the code rewrite, the document is out. We know that, uh, planning commission, this is something that you all have been looking forward to. Having that full final document, having it ready. Um, and so we wanted to take this opportunity now to really go through the document, look at what some of those major differences may look like. Um, how we're going to be having a new code and what some of those things may entail. Um, but during this, um, really making sure that we're having this discussion, um, with the commissioners on what some of these issues you all may have, what are some things that want to get a little bit better understanding on? Um, so we've got, you know, time today, uh, to look at a lot of these things as well as additional time over the next couple of weeks prior to, uh, the June 7th meeting that we can meet and discuss, um, as much as we need. Um, but ultimately, uh, today, we just kind of want to look at a couple of different things with you all. Um, so looking at kind of an overview of what all we want to discuss today. Uh, so really, you know, looking at, uh, primary objectives with this rewrite. So what all we're looking to achieve as part of this new code. Uh, and then go through what's, what we're calling big changes between the old code and the new code. Um, and then just kind of briefly, uh, give you all an update as it relates to the remapping process. And then, uh, having some specific room at the end of this for any additional comments and discussion. Uh, and so that's not to say that hold all questions, hold all comments to the end. Uh, we want this to be very fluid, very dynamic in terms of how that input from you all looks. Um, so as we're going through this, if you have questions, if you have comments, please, uh, feel free to stop us. As we're going through this. Um, so Mr. Chair, Commissioner, any, uh, initial thoughts, comments before we get moving into it?
Nope, I think that's fine. Um, we look forward to the presentation.
All right. Um, so as I mentioned, so here wanting to look at kind of, you know, the, the purpose behind, behind the rewrite itself. And so ultimately, uh, this relates back to the 2015 conference plan. Um, as the code rewrite being the big outcome of how we need to, what we need to do in order to meet that new vision that the plan set for. So the current LDC was, uh, last updated in 2015. That was the last major update. Um, and so we're really working under the auspices of about a 15-year code. And so that leaves us with a code that is outdated, does not really allow for development that meshes with the, uh, vision for growth and development that the comprehensive plan set forth as part of the 2015 plan. Uh, so really looking at things like rural protections, development of suburban centers, or just being easy to access and understand. And so the, really kind of the purpose of the rewrite itself is being this key measure to implement the county's land use policies to set forth the regulations that are in line with current best practices. And so the document that is currently available is the public hearing draft, which we're going to be asking you all to, uh, take action on next month as well as county council at their zoning public hearing, in June. So, uh, as of now, it's been open, uh, to the public to access and view for about two or three weeks now. And by the time it comes to you all, it will have been available for about, uh, any, about between 30 and 45 days. And then around 60 days by the time it gets to county council for first reading. Um, and so that, all of the proposed regulations for the code rewrite is available on the project website. So weplantogather.org, um, all of the former work products, as well as some of the presentation materials from, uh, engagement processes passed is also available on that website. And then one of the things that's really important for this is having some of those other opportunities going forward, um, for where we're having, where and how we're, uh, engaging with the public. And so right now, um, next week, we have four different, uh, what we're calling the public forums again, scheduled via Zoom at the moment, uh, with the public. So we've got some in the morning, some in the afternoon, and some in the evening. Uh, so that way everyone who wants to has that ability to participate, uh, via those Zoom meetings. And so even if they aren't able to attend, we will be having those streamed through the county YouTube. And so they will be archived there also. So even if someone misses one meeting, they'll be able to go back and see, well, what was the comments? Or what was the questions that were had there, um, versus the ones that maybe another meeting. Um, and so another way that we're, uh, getting, trying to have, you know, a good understanding of what we're doing, what's, what's the code is about. Um, is we're also having one-on-one meetings that, uh, residents and schedule for come up to the county building, meet with, uh, Tommy and myself in a one-on-one environment to really get a good grasp on what this code is, what it's about, and what some of those big changes might be. Um, and so those are just a couple of different ways of how we're trying to, uh, ensure that, you know, everyone has a grasp on, uh, the code text itself. And so we're trying to make sure that we have multiple engagement points, uh, as well as a relatively lengthy period of time, uh, that this, uh, text process is going to be available for. And so again, looking at what these objectives are for the new code itself. And so the, the big things are looking at the user friendliness. And so ways that it looks at that is consolidating and reorganizing the land development code structure. So this includes things like illustrations, diagrams, flow charts, and tables. Um, uses down-to-earth language, standardizes procedures for applications and submittals. Um, and so it's just making it where it's a better document. And we'll look at some of those examples, uh, here in a minute, uh, for the everyday public, the developers that are using it every day. Uh, you know, so whether you're picking it up for the first time or whether it's your 20th time taking it up, it's going to be relatively easy to flip through, to look at, to get to, uh, what you're trying to look at as part of the document. Whereas right now, we have some circular references where you gotta, you know, we have one reference that takes you to another reference, that takes you to another reference, that takes you to another reference. So by the time you get to where you're going, you've had to flip through, you know, several different sections to get there. So one of the key things with this new code is user friendliness. Another objective here is implementing the policies of planners from county. So with that, we're looking to provide a greater range of, or greater range and type of housing choice than what we've currently had, uh, possible within the code. Um, for having better ease with which to undertake infill, redevelopment, and investment for residential and commercial properties. Enable preservation and continuance of rural character and working lands with appropriate zoning. Uh, have more open space, better conservation of land, incentives for green practices. Um, and then things like allowing for military operations to continue as well as avoiding some of those approaches. Another major, uh, objective is aligning those zoning districts and uses of the current best practices. So where we have new districts, new uses and new new standards that allow for development in different contexts versus a one-size-fits-all approach throughout. And so with that, looking at more contemporary development standards such as modernized, uh, parking standards, minimum open space requirements, design-informed standards, where the code will help provide for quality development that all county residents, residents can agree upon. Um, while also ensuring green development practices that will help provide a more sustainable county and more sustainable development that provides benefits to all. So really, those are what we're looking to achieve out of this code rewrite process. Uh, and really what those objectives look like from going from the old code to the new code. And so what we're going to look at here is really how is the land development code changing? So primarily looking at some of these major, uh, major sections, uh, and articles that see some significant departures from how everything exists. And so one thing that we want to mention here and that we're trying to be very clear with as relates to our language is that the code rewrite process is not just an update, nor is it simply just making revisions. We are looking at the new code being something entirely new. So we're not just, again, not just moving from the old to the new, but having something else entirely different. So where there's still maybe some aspects of the old code that carried forward in the new code, we're looking at this as being something entirely different than what we've had in the past. And so I think, you know, a lot of times we look at the apples-to-apples comparison kind of thing. And this is something that's a little bit more true, uh, for the zoning map and some of the other standards. But we're not necessarily looking at this being an apples-to-apples. If we are looking at it as an apples-to-apples, we're looking at it from a pink lady to a gay woman. Where it's still an apple, but it gives you some type of other texture, flavor, taste, look, feel, et cetera. Um, other ways, we're also thinking about it being an apples to maybe a pig, or excuse me, a fig, a pear, an avocado, a pomegranate, et cetera, where it's something different, but it's still within that overall kind of family. Um, if you will, in terms of kind of how things compare to it. Um, so we just kind of wanted to make sure that we give that comparison and analogy because we're, we're looking at this as being something different entirely versus just being an update or revision. So article two, the administration article, this is one of those articles that sees some major changes, uh, from the current code, uh, or a major difference, excuse me, from the current code to the proposed code. Um, and so really with the administration article, we're looking at more approachable, easier to understand, graphic-heavy. Um, so a major change provides for a standard set of review procedures across all applications. So, uh, looking at, you know, flow charts such as this, that really kind of tells you, all right, what are all the steps, um, for the various applications? You generally know, um, the process is going to be the same for each of these different applications. So who's doing what, how is it being looked at, et cetera. So it really allows for much more user-friendly and easier-to-understand process versus the current code. Um, provides for a major departure in regards to the overall look, feel, and approachability of the code itself. So again, much more graphic-heavy, um, more easy to understand in terms of what these flow charts are, knowing who does what, who has the decision, et cetera. Um, so really, what we're hoping for is leads to a better understanding for the everyday citizen looking to get something done. Uh, so someone that may not necessarily be looking at the code on a day-in, day-out basis, they're going to pick it up maybe once every three or four years kind of thing. Um, that those who, uh, may not be interacting with it all the time, it's a lot easier to grasp, a lot easier to understand versus how the new code is set up. So the next major article that sees some revisions is obviously the zoning districts. And so again, looking at ways to have easier navigation, um, really looks at categorizing the zoning districts into broad groupings. Um, so you know, this is going to be one of the main things that you all, as planning commission, are going to be looking at on a regular basis. And so now we're really looking at, again, these kind of three major groupings of districts. So we have base district, plan development district, overly districts. But within those, we really kind of have these subsets. So, uh, looking at the base districts, we have special purpose, residential, non-residential, and mixed use, as well as neighborhood master plan ones. And then obviously, the plan development is pretty much the plan development as it is now, uh, as well as the overlays, which are going to, you know, apply those additional standards or restrictions, or relax those standard restrictions, uh, than what occurs in the underlying base district. So this is just a graphic example of what, excuse me, of what that layout looks like within the proposed code. So, uh, again, much more graphic-friendly, uh, really sets forth what the purpose is, kind of gives you some concept images, uh, shows you where those U standards are, what those dimensional standards are in a, you know, graphic format. So we have the tabular, and then we also have how you're looking at those related to a graphic itself. And then where do you find the standards for that district? Um, and so just kind of, again, I want you to get your visual of what this looks like in the proposed code. And then, you know, what we look at in the current code all the time. Whereas, you know, this is really what we look at, and that's about it. And so, you know, looking at this, then looking at this, I mean, it's obviously a improvement in terms of user friendliness into how it's set up and how it's structured. So obviously, again, providing those examples, providing those diagrams, and showing where those things are. So really looking at that user friendliness for the citizen, um, as relates to what those standards are for the zoning district. So again, just know what we have now and just, you know, again, looking at it from that perspective, looking at that user friendliness. So, uh, for the zoning districts itself, uh, we're looking at several changes. Including refinements, consolidations, and deletions. So the biggest refinement or change is a switch to a density-based zoning. Um, and so here, we're removing what we have now as a current minimum lot standard. So instead, we would have a dwelling unit per acre standard. So for instance, a four-dwelling unit per acre. So really, we're kind of saying the same thing, we're just saying it slightly different. Um, so, but we do have a couple of those other size standards, uh, or dimensional standards that really help, um, with some of that stuff. So such as setbacks and things of that nature. Um, and so really, the main reason for this change adds to increased flexibility for the lot design and the development. And so again, looking at more so, you know, that gross density that can be achieved as part of that development. Um, and so some other refinements also provide for greater variability across the districts. So having more specific context development, so you get appropriate sizes of lots for appropriate uses, appropriate areas, versus kind of the, the one-size-fits-all that we really have now, where it's kind of suburban and suburban. Uh, so having a little bit more variability in terms of context, in terms of character, um, where there is a little bit more of a transition and gradation between and across the various zoning districts. So for instance, uh, the, the residential base districts, so the RT through the R6, you know, where there's a little bit more gradation between the two versus it's just kind of a, a minor difference. And so, uh, one of the things that we have with the new code is various districts that serve similar purposes, had similar features, or consolidated. So for instance, uh, the PR and TROS serve similar functions, those are consolidated into the OS open-space district. Um, and then, uh, you know, numerous districts were deleted because of limited use, applicability, or not achieving the stated purpose, or could be better served by another district. So really, the big change with that is looking at the RU, the rural district that we currently have, where it is being deleted. And so that is one that currently covers a significant portion of Richland County. But, you know, we're not carrying it forward, and in its place, we have, say, probably about four different districts that we'll, that we're going to be looking at as kind of those replacements. Um, so things like the AG, the Homestead, the RT, as well as the R1, that will be serving that variety of functions that the RU currently serves, but breaking up those extremes. Um, but overall, we think we're looking at 27, 28, uh, districts now, uh, than what we had previously. And so here, um, we're looking at a table of what we're calling the zoning equivalencies, or in other words, to think about it is translations. So again, thinking about that apples-to-apples, uh, analogy, whereas some of this stuff, you might have an apple, but it's going to be a different kind of apple. Um, so, uh, looking at certain things like, you know, what the equivalency of the open space district in the new code is. The most equivalent within the old code was the TROS and the PR. Um, so in terms of character, comes their context, in terms of really what we are looking to try to achieve with that old district. So similarly, you know, for the AG district, for the new code, the most equivalent contextually and character-wise is going to be the, the RU that we currently have. But again, because that's the only thing that's even kind of close to it versus something that's not even, you know, within the same realm of possibility. Similarly, with the Homestead, the RU, and so looking at a lot of these districts, a lot of them are things that are similar to what a lot of the districts exist as currently. But again, we're looking at most, most equivalent. And so, you know, you could be looking at a red apple that still becomes a red apple, but it's just got a slightly different taste, a slightly different texture. Um, and so a lot of these things are similar in terms of character, in terms of context, um, where it's not necessarily a significant departure. Some of the districts within the new code, so for instance, the MU2, MU3, those are going to be something different entirely than what we've seen and can experience with the current code. So we don't necessarily have one that we feel is relatively equivalent, just based on what you can do with it, what you're really able to achieve with that district itself. Um, so again, similarly, looking at the GC, GC is pretty much GC as it is now with some of the findings. Same way with LI, HI, et cetera. Um, and so one of the ones to note, um, is the M1 that's being deleted. And one of the ones that's probably most equivalent in terms of character and context is going to be the employment district. Um, so it's a new one that's been proposed. And a lot of these things, we have talked about as part of previous presentations. Um, and so, you know, some of this stuff may sound and look familiar. Um, but it's really kind of just looking at this as part of a larger refresher, um, with some of these different things.
Crooks, um, the slide's new to me in that, but I think it's going to be very important in the long run, I'm sure you would agree. In the application, the transition, uh, would you be sure to send this slide to the commission via email?
Yeah, this, uh, the zoning equivalencies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
Um, and then, so, so with this one, just wanted to kind of look at something similar. Um, so instead of con, so, so instead of context, just also looking at density. So on the left-hand side of this chart, you have what the new district is, uh, within the, within the new code. And then on the right-hand side, you have what the district, uh, equivalent is for the old code. Um, and one thing that you'll notice here is a lot of the densities are different between the equivalencies in terms of context and character. So an equivalent density-wise for the R1 would be the RU and RR. So that's a more equivalent density that can be achieved versus in terms of context and character. So that's one of those things, what I meant earlier in terms of the RU, where really it's a misnomer and, and really it's not the most effective in terms of what it can achieve and what it can do. Because on one extreme, you can do what you can do under the AG proposed. But at the same time, you can also do what you, what you can do proposed as the R1. So you get these two different extremes within the current RU, where it's not actually rural developed. It's mainly just suburban development that can be achieved with some, you know, agricultural and some other, you know, residential uses and the like thrown out. Um, and so one of the things that we're really hopeful for as part of this is looking at, you know, the, the context and character that you're able to achieve as a lot of this goes forward. Um, as you're getting more context-specific development, more character area development, and again, having this transition, uh, between, you know, one district to the other. Um, and so again, looking at some of these densities, you know, much less density than what, uh, we currently have. But then some of these relatively similar, relatively similar, relatively similar, and then we see some increase as we go to some of those more intense residential districts. Um, and so as you'll see here, uh, you know, some of the language change between the consolidated draft and the public hearing draft is the way that we're referencing a lot of these base residential districts. So we're not looking at it being residential, single-family, low-density, residential, single-family, medium-density, et cetera. We're just looking at this as being a gradation of residential. So we've got R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, R6. So it's residential X, residential Y, residential Z. Because again, looking at how some of those housing types and housing choices could be playing out, you know, where we're not being as exclusive or exclusionary in terms of how some of those things could be happening in terms of those land uses within those districts. And so that's just one thing I wanted to kind of point out there as it relates to, you know, some of this nomenclature with these, where, you know, a residential two is a residential two. It's not necessarily single-family density. Though, within the purpose statement, we do look at some language that this is for a, you know, lesser intense less residential development versus just saying low-density. Because again, low-density might mean a variety of different things versus when you think of intensity, that's a little bit easier thing to think of and characterize, um, versus just density itself. So moving into kind of some of these, you know, new districts and kind of what they look like, what they entail. So the agricultural district, um, really intended for larger area working lands uses. And so it's going to have basically an equivalent seven acre minimum, um, but we also added a. But we also added a continuous area requirement. So you have to have thirty five acres overall. That's either AG or Homestead, all continuous in order for something to be zoned as AG. And so really, that's, that's to, to look at its purpose and what the intent for that district is. To where it is related more so to active agricultural lands. So think farming, think grazing, et cetera. And limited residential uses. And those that do exist as residences are significantly large track. Very, very low intensity residential uses. And so one of the new districts that we're looking at here within the public hearing draft. From the consolidated draft is the Homestead district. And so this really came about as part of. Comments from the public, from council. As well as some of the technical exercises, part of the remapping process that we've been doing. Where we were kind of seeing, you know, this, this need for a third district for the quote unquote rural areas. And so this is really intended as more so a truly rural character area district. That's not necessarily catered specifically to the working lands, but is more so catered towards. The residential areas. So this is more so intended for residences with small scale. Small scale agricultural uses. And so really, you're kind of looking at, and so it's got a density of point three, three, which is about a three acre. Minimum equivalent. And so that's going to be one of those replacements for the RU. As well as the AG and the residential transition RT district. As kind of really does, there's three major candidates as well as the R one residential one district. Replacing the RU. And so some of the other things we wanted to kind of point out in terms of new districts was the mixed use districts. And we, we've kind of talked about these throughout the rewrite process. And this was, you know, some of the focus as it relates to the testing is, you know, what could we achieve under some of that? You know, under these new districts. And so we did make refinements to a couple of those districts based on the testing. Based on, you know, kind of the results of that, as well as comments from commissioners and council. And so those have been refined ever so slightly, but with those, we're really looking at having development that we really wouldn't be able to achieve within our current code. And so again, focusing much more on integration of uses, very intense mixture of uses. Whether that's commercial, retail, service, or even housing, you know. Really going to be at something significantly different than what's achievable now. And then looking at some of our other new districts, so the employment district and the institutional district. So really, the EMP is intended to help facilitate those various employment type uses related to industrial development. So mainly processing, manufacturing, while still being complementary to high density or high intensity residential uses. As well as commercial uses. So really, how could you integrate, you know, employment facilities, offices, things of that nature. With other commercial development. And then the INS district really intended for, you know, larger site institutional campuses. So think government buildings, schools, libraries, things of that nature. That ensures compatibility with that surrounding development. But I think one of the things that I think some of us on staff are interested to see is really how that district plays out. Because it does allow for that variety of uses. And so, you know, folks get it really creative with how. The INS district is applied and the way that it is utilized. Because one of the caveats with it is it does carry a five acre minimum continuous area. So you do have to have five contiguous acres of INS in order for it to be zoned as such. But would allow for a broad swath of uses to exist as part of that development. So this is going to be, I think, one of those interesting ones to see how it plays out. Going forward. And then looking at some of those PDDs, so we got two new classes of planned development district. So the employment campus and the traditional neighborhood design. And so really, that employment campus is really intended for, kind of think of like the company town. Type of development where you've got all of your employment, you've got some housing, you've got some. Commercial, all integrated together as part of this contiguous site, this, this development. So that's going to be one of the things to see with it is, you know, how could this be benefiting economic developmental projects? You know, how could this be enticing, you know, those types of people, especially as we look at it with the. You know, in terms of the economic development office and while they're looking to do so, you know, with our industrial sites and things like that. Do we go ahead and look at how can we create these consolidated sites where make sure that we're going to be meeting all of those prospective? Perspective industries needs, you know, how do we, how could this potentially, you know, be a benefit to them? And then same way, the traditional neighborhood design really focuses on having that human scale walkable neighborhoods. Where we have complete, complete areas themselves, where you know, everything, you're going to be able to meet your daily needs. And just a walk around your, your neighborhood, you know, you're going to be able to get some groceries, you're going to be able to get, you know, go to the. Go to the restaurant, go to the drugstore, things like that. So trying to have all of that integrated within the neighborhood itself.
Mr. Crooks.
Yeah.
Sorry, you're, you're really rolling. You're doing a great job. I hate to stop you at any point. It's just a question, you can answer it later if you want to, but in the discussion about some of these districts that will have a required minimum. Contiguous acreage. In the situation where the, the district is appropriate at the time of application. But then later, you know, some contiguous property that helped you meet that qualification earlier. Gets sold, gets rezoned. Is there a risk of losing that designation because you no longer have the contiguous minimum acreage?
So I think that's just one of those situations where at that point it'd become non-conforming in terms of that, whatever that site was that had the rest of that. But that is a good question. I think that's something we'll definitely have to take a look at and think about. Mr. Delage and Mr. Price, if you still want to hear any comments from you all about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think in most typical circumstances, you know, that would trigger then a need for us to look at it. Whether it be staff or the property owner that's, that's adjacent, so as the remainder of, you know, that property to either consider. Is, is the ripeness there for a resoning request? Or if the use is still there, is permitted underneath the zoning district, but it's no longer contiguous. You know, that, at, at that point, it's still technically a legal use, but, you know, in non-conforming. Maybe by the standards of what you would apply to for the zoning district and how the contiguous acreage. But I mean, I, I think it's kind of the, the chicken or the egg is at that point, do they continue on with what they have or do they request a rezoning?
Yeah, because also am I, am I thinking about this right? Is it a little different in that? This is now creating a discussion about whether a district remains. District, whatever, classification assignment, whatever remains versus a use of, on the property. Is that different or is it pretty much the same as what we have now with the non-conforming stuff?
And we're always going to say, in, in this case, if the use is legally established, it's going to follow all that non-conforming. Standards as far as we're being able to continue, even if technically, and, and I would use this for in particular. So say you had a bunch of AG district, there are certain criteria that you have to have minimum acreages and you're supposed to be. And maybe you're the smaller part of that acreage, but continuously you're all thirty five acres. If, you know, John decides to, to sell and, and develop a portion of it, it doesn't necessarily affect the viability of the remainder. It, it's just from a standpoint of were they wanting to add additional AG, they would have to make sure they meet that criteria.
Yeah, 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 that, that does get to my question. Just like, can, can that persist as an appropriate classification? If it's so desired by the remaining continuous contiguous landowner who, you know. No longer can meet that minimum acreage requirement. All right, thanks.
Very welcome.
So next, good topic. And again, Mr. Random, anybody else, please stop me. I know, I know I'm kind of rolling through this. But I think part of it is, you know, this is stuff that we've talked about previously. And we're also hoping that over the past few weeks, you guys have really been diving into a lot of this stuff too. So we really wanted to get to a lot of the more, more meat of it in terms of some of the general development standards that we haven't had as long a time with. So go ahead and just stop us throughout with whatever question or comments you have. Yeah.
I, I got some stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, when we, a few slides back, we were talking about the rural areas. How are we going to move forward in the rural areas for rural businesses? You know, I've, I looked through all code, I've looked through this one, and there's a lot of businesses that wouldn't be a commercial entity. Because they're more along the lines of an agricultural rural area such as, you know. I mean, we recently had one, a taxidermist, but you also got farm equipment maintenance.
Yeah, so.
How's all that going to?
Yes, so that's a, that's a good question. And so a lot of that, so, so as it relates to the AG. That's why we're looking at that being more so working lands versus it being a residential district, if you will. So it's more so catered to those agricultural uses and those agricultural supporting uses. And so those would be things like farm equipment sales, things like that. But at the same time, you know, limiting what we would call, you know, more so commercial businesses. So thinking, and this will be one of the things that we kind of touch on a little bit later, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at uses having. You know, different groupings, so whether that's a, a classification, a category and a use. And so how we're identifying a lot of those as it relates to the zoning district themselves. And so for the AG, a lot of those agricultural supporting uses that are businesslike. Or are some part commercial or institutional, things like that, where they are appropriate, including them in there. And so related to, you know, kind of the, the zoning request that we had a couple of months ago for the deer processing center. So seeing where some of these subuses, if you will, so where it falls under processing use. Or right now, under the current code, it's only allowed an HI or LI or things like that. So where processing is appropriate. But how do we look at the use standard and the use permission? Where we can say, okay, yeah, that's an appropriate use or appropriate subuse. So we add restrictions on that subuse for say, okay, deer processing as part of processing is allowed in the. AG. Ho, H, Homestead, et cetera district. For, but only if you meet these special requirements. And so those would be a lot of ways how a lot of those uses are handled at the moment. And also, we're going to be taking a look at some other of those types of uses like that and taking a kind of a deep dive within that land use table. And to see kind of what, what else might be appropriate and what may not be appropriate. And then what are some of those additional standards that we might include? So that's generally how it's being handled now. Did that answer your question, Mr. Dennis?
Yes, it does. Because I, I mean, I was looking at this and I've come up with about sixty five types of businesses that could really. I would not open one ever in a city, but I would do it in the rural area because it fits out there. Growing up on a farm.
Yeah, and so that's another thing is looking at how do the different districts interact with one another? And so this is going to be more so where it's more of a mapping question and application versus just the zoning districts themselves. Related to the text. But so looking at the RC rural commercial district. Where does that get applied map wise in relation to these other districts in the more rural areas? So that way, if it is a more commercial specific use, okay, that's, that goes in this commercial district. Instead of being in the agricultural district. So that's another component that we're looking at for some of those things is how might this district be appropriate in RC? And then, okay, well, where might we want to look at mapping RC? And so that's part of that same conversation, but it's looking at it through those two different approaches. So whereas, you know, how does the text, you know, look at some of these uses, but then how do we actually apply that district map wise? Does that make sense?
It does. I, I've just noticed, you know, reading through everything, it looks like when you get into the, our residential areas, city areas. What I call. We have a little more tighter constraints because I mean, that's what a city is, but I'm glad to see that the rural area we're allowing. A little bit more land use for the people that own it. Because I mean, if you've got thirty five acres of land. And, you know, you could open up a business and you're not bothering anybody. I think that's a good thing. I, I kind of like how this is going.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, I guess the, the, the big thing is looking at compatibility. I mean, that's obviously, I mean, that's one of the main intensive purposes of, you know, land use control, excuse me, land use controls. And so. How does the use is, how are they compatible within those districts themselves? And then eventually looking at the map, how is the map compatible within those districts? So you're really looking at it from kind of, you know, the layers. So how does the use is fit within the districts themselves? And then how does the district spit comp compared to each other when they're applied on the map? So that's one of the things we're, you know, trying to look at compatibility, but also what fits character wise. You know, where we have more so complete communities, where if there's a need and want for these things, then there's the ability to achieve.
Thank you very much for explaining that. The other question I had was, let's say, like residential areas. Have, have we looked at? I've noticed some of the stuff is pretty identical for like setbacks and things like that. But like, what's there are building heights, building size. Have we looked at that? Because, you know, being in real estate and my wife, I love her and I watch a lot of HGTV. And there's a lot of new things coming out in, in the real estate world, a lot of new types of buildings coming out for homes. And really and truly, they're really set up weird for building heights and things like that. Have we really done a big dive into looking at the future for that? I mean, I know that's a broad question, but have we kind of looked at some of the future types of houses that's coming on to the market? Such as, you know, there's a lot of 3D printed houses and some of those in the Florida area and the Panhandle. They've been printing up to sixty feet.
Well, so I think that again, goes back to kind of that character compatibility question. So, you know, for instance, the R six, we have a building height max of, you know, a variety of different things that you can continue to build upon. But that's in, you know, the most intense residential district. And everything else, you're really kind of looking at a standard, you know, forty five foot height. So really kind of looking at two or three stories for the most part for residential use. And so I think it's, and, and you can see increases in this using the general development, using the general development standards. So the, the green incentive provisions, you would be able to achieve additional height for stories. I think it's additional. I think it was eighteen feet Tommy or one story, whichever. But so you'd be able to achieve additional height with this, but I think it goes back to, you know. You know, you, you're a point about Florida. I mean, that's different context, different character than necessarily what we have in our system. You know, we're, we're an unincorporated area. Yeah, we have a, you know, broad swath of area from urban to suburban. To exurban to rural, you know, we, we, we cover the gambit. But in terms of, I think, you know, height wise, that's really where context and character really applies to some of those. Where, you know, we're not looking at having, you know, four story, you know, buildings within a development. No, we're not, I, I don't think we're going to have the market for Nashville tall and skinnies kind of thing. So I just think it's, I mean, it's something we can take a look at, I think definitely. But I just don't know at this moment. If it's something that has really come up in terms of comments and I guess questions or issues. Or concerns that we've really been hearing. But I do think it's something to potentially keep on the radar, especially, you know, looking at three months. Six months, a year, post adoption to see if, hey, how might we need to adjust some of these things based on what the market is asking for?
The, the reason why I ask that is the Columbia area, I, I really see it as almost the twin. Of the Tallahassee area and Leon County down there. And they have a lot of areas that's low lying and I just. And I just want to see how that would play into building a house that, you know, kind of like at the beach, if you're in a low line area to get away with that FEMA flood zone type thing, build a house on steel type thing. So I was just kind of curious upon that.
Tommy, you got, got any comment for that?
Well, now other than, I mean, of course, you know, depending upon the baseball elevation, which you got to get the lowest score to, I mean, I think that's really going to dictate the, uh, the height. Um, of course, you know, for the most part, again, that, that three stories is typically the map or the, uh, the, the typical kind of, you know, height, uh, very rarely do you see it exceed there. However, um, I would say though, that there is also, you know, for instances where there are some extraordinary and exceptional conditions, uh, there's always a variance process to exceed that. But I think it's one of those things too, if we find that, you know, it's an issue with whether it be within floodplain development or around the county. I mean, text amendments are appropriate at that point, um, to be able to kind of help meet those standards as well, if we're starting to see a pattern.
Thank you, Tommy. That, that's very helpful. Um, just cause, you know, I, I'm out on the rivers and along riverbanks a lot, and there's a lot of things. And I meet a lot of people that say, man, I'd love to build a house here, but it's flood zone area. And I kind of throw that pitch out. Well, think about a state, you know, house and they, they kind of think about that. And then when I look at everything in here, I'm, it's kind of a gray area. And I was just kind of seeing how that would fit in. But thank you very much.
That's it.
Um, so looking at some other things. So, so, you know, looking at some of these other new overlay districts. So two of the new overlay districts that we're looking at are going to be the neighborhood character overlay, which is really looking at, uh, neighborhood characters, protect and preserve certain elements. Um, and so that's going to have really limited applicability only to neighborhood master plan areas. And those master plan areas have to meet also specific criteria even within the code. Um, and so, you know, a lot of that's really looking at design elements, things like that. So one of the, the big areas that this would really apply to would be the capital city, uh, Mill District area. So where the, so the Olympia Mill Village. So, you know, how that might look at, looking at after, after, excuse me, architectural features. Um, so related to new development, redevelopment, things like that. So protecting that historic character of that area. And so that's really one of the, the main things of what that, uh, NCO would be looking at. And then another new, uh, overlay district looks at military installations, particularly, uh, Fort Jackson, McGrady Training Center and, uh, McIntyre. And so I think one of the things is, you know, I think McIntyre, uh, would really have probably the, the greatest benefit to this. But it looks really is looking at, you know, the compatibility of, you know, what that mission operability is that they have as well as, you know, ensuring everyone is a good neighbor kind of thing. Um, and so, you know, we have been having conversations with the installations related to this. Um, and so they seem to be really on board with it. Um, and I think they're, they're very happy and, you know, we based on some of those conversations, there may be some things that we could look at tweaking and refining a little bit, especially as some of their, uh, you know, operations change and things like that. And so those are always one of those things that, you know, we have to take a look at. But I think, you know, so far, I mean, everyone's been very, very receptive and very appreciative of what this overlay is looking at. So not just the bases themselves, but also, uh, residents around the area. From what we've been hearing related to this. And so I think with that, I, I think I'm going to kind of shut up for a minute and I'm going to let Mr. Glage talk. And he's going to take us through, uh, the general development standards and kind of what all, uh, you know, these are including and, and how we're looking at major changes, minor changes and new things altogether.
Hey, Mr. Crooks, this is Mr. Yonkey. As you transition, I just wanted to thank you guys again for coming out and having conversations with the military. We definitely appreciated your time.
Yeah.
Happy to be.
Thanks for having us.
So, all right. So now we're getting to some of the fun stuff now with the general development standards. So, uh, these are the standards that apply to basically all development. So things that you're looking at like access to public roads or right of way. You're looking at, uh, the off-street parking requirements, landscaping, landscaping materials, buffering, uh, signs, fence requirements, water quality buffers. Um, so looking at this particular slide, the sections that are in red are the ones that saw significant changes, uh, from the previous iterations and the current code now. So one of the things that we identified, uh, with conversations with stakeholders was that, uh, basically open space set-asides. You know, they were using, uh, the open space code or any previously toilet, the green code, uh, to kind of help, uh, get some relief from those general development standards. So, uh, lot size with, um, so a major change from the last draft to now was that we've increased some of those open space set-asides. But at the same time, also allows for more flexibility in some of those set-asides as far as we're helping to achieve that. And what I mean by that is, is, you know, developing like, say, instead of just having a detention pond, which you couldn't count, now you turn it into a natural feature, um, it's an amenity to the subdivision. And we also looked at the cluster development as well, uh, changing some of those standards. The intent of the cluster development is for your more larger lot zoning districts. So to allow for some context, character appropriate development, um, that also allows for you to kind of leave a, a large, you know, parcel undeveloped, but then to cluster your homes together. Um, also looking at some, uh, compatibility standards for say neighborhoods, a, a prime example of a location of this would be, so say Decker Boulevard. So if you're familiar with Decker, there's commercial down Decker, um, kind of on, you know, both ends. Uh, but there's also established residential that is essentially one block over on the backside of that commercial. So this would allow for a new development or redevelopment to come in and do something like a neighborhood scale appropriate commercial. So there's not such a, uh, kind of a drastic impact between the two uses. Um, so for instance, take a, um, venue that had outdoor music or outdoor seating. There's some limitations that go with that. So you're not going to have, you know, loud music being played at ten o'clock at night with the resonance backing right up to it. Also has some transitions as far as for heights and uses. So again, so you don't have, you know, that, that three-story building on right next to a one-story. So it kind of allows for a transition in there. Now getting into the medium blue, um, so kind of those that are, uh, highlighted up above the first three. There's just some moderate changes, uh, mainly updating, uh, so, you know, coming up to the most current standards and, and adding some more, uh, specificity for landscaping. Or, or the dark blue essentially is the, um, only minor refinement. So what we've had, you know, typically is working well. There's not necessarily issues with, say, sewer lighting um, or performance standards, road naming, minor things like that. Next slide, please, unless you want to share the screen. So, um, air access for that. But anyway, access and mobility and connectivity. So, um, this is a big one because we're now looking a little bit more at those external street connections and, and how the development is kind of shaped for those connections. So cul-de-sacs, um, for instance, uh, how they are used, uh, the length of cul-de-sacs in addition to, uh, kind of how we're looking at future connectivity to adjacent developments. Um, you know, that maybe had plans in the works or could be developing in the future. Uh, we've, there's also been the connectivity index, which is a new addition, uh, to the code. Um, this was in previous versions, but the idea is rather than to have one major road going through, and then you end up with, you know, a bunch of cul-de-sacs throughout. In this instance, it's to encourage more of a grid pattern. So, um, or different connectivity rather than just having a central road, cul-de-sac, 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 and then no connectivity to the exterior. Um, kind of looking again at those links and nodes, um, trying to discourage cul-de-sacs, um, in, unless it's feasible. There's also, uh, cross-access, uh, for adjacent commercial development. So, you know, trying to get into eliminate the need for a vehicle to enter onto a major road or an, an external road if they're adjacent to another development that they could easily access. Also looking at pedestrian connections, uh, one of the examples on the screen is kind of showing that to where there is an existing neighborhood that's got sidewalks and, and potentially be able to provide that access out to an external sidewalk.
Yeah. I think, I think Tommy, one thing I, I, I would want to add here is also just, you know, the, the, the way that the access mobility connectivity, the way that these standards are set up is going to be looking at more so that future planning related to those sets. And so, cause you can kind of see, you know, on this example diagram here, you know, these street stops. So where those might connect to a future development or adjoining development, not just for necessarily a commercial, but also for some residential, you know, that's increasing that connectivity, increasing that access overall versus, you know, a lot of the, the comments that you all hear a lot, um, is, well, the traffic's an issue. Well, that's because it really, our, our road network isn't necessarily a network. It's four or five roads that everybody funnels out to all at the same time. And so there's no real interconnections between them. So there's no real higher level order or filtering that can occur with the various developments. And so, you know, if I need to get to a point, if, if I'm trying to get to this one location, everybody else is trying to get this location. Well, we're only going to be able to get there through one or two roads. And so what this is going to also, you know, part you're looking at is how do we increase some of those connections internally? So that way we're not having as much, uh, external congestion and, uh, lack of access that way as well. So wanted to make sure we kind of noted that too.
I got something real quick. If you got a minute, Tommy?
Absolutely.
So on the slide, you know, we're talking about, um, connectivity. I've had the pleasure of living all over the world and one of the best places I lived at was Downey Market in the United Kingdom. And tell you the truth, they really didn't do great job of where you could drive around, but they had a tremendous pedestrian connection, um, through different neighborhoods so that they could get to grocery stores or a place to shop that doesn't, that's not very far away. And like you said, over on Decker or up here on Two Knocks where I live, um, over on Polo Road type things, there's a lot of people that walk and we have a lot of bus stops just on the side of the road that makes zero sense because it's not safe, um, coming down some of these roads. So I think with this rewrite, we have a chance to start looking at how we can, um, increase pedestrian connections. And I'm glad that we got that on there. But is there a way to kind of look back on what we've already got and try to, uh, expand upon that with the new stuff coming?
And I guess that if I'm understanding the question correctly, meaning the existing developments and existing, if you want to call it infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, and, and how do we go back in and kind of fill those in or?
Correct. Cause there, there's quite a few neighborhoods around in the Northeast that I know, um, that I see, and they have the, you know, walkways and they connect, but then they're only just in their neighborhood. But I mean, like over in North Springs, like people can walk over in North Springs, but there's no way to get from North Springs over to the Sand Hills area where they can go shopping. And it's right across the road. There's no safe way to kind of get over, except going all the way up when all those neighborhoods going down through there. They could have a cut through for walking and stuff like that. I, I think that would be one way to also increase green spaces, walking just to the shop and things like that to grab milk, bread, simple things. Because I mean, we got, we got new developments coming up and then we got areas that, you know, will have new grocery stores coming up. And if we kind of implement that on these new areas, that would probably allow us to, in the future, to start going back over some of the old stuff and kind of implementing that also.
Right. And, and at least from the standpoint of, um, like SE DOT, for example, I'll, I'll use them because that's the easiest one. Cause most of the major roads in Richland County, the DOT roads, but typically they, they look at the feasibility of, you know, some kind of amenities when they're, you know, either doing widening. Or typically you wouldn't see that just on a resurface, but when they're actually undertaking a major project, looking at feasibility of, of, you know, either having bike lanes or, or adding sidewalks. So I think that that's one way to address some of that on at least the major roads. I think as far as for the county and what necessarily that we have jurisdiction over or control as far as for when it comes to, uh, retrofitting some of the existing stuff. The, uh, change of use criteria would kick in at some point. So if there's some changes, um, what, you know, it, it could be a parking, it, it could be to building footprint or the use or area attributed to the use, those would trigger, uh, potentially a, you know, a, a process for them to have to bring everything up, you know, to current standards. Um, that, that's one way to address it. You know, off the top of my head, I have to kind of search through and, and if I miss anything, Brian, please jump in.
Yeah. I mean, that, that'd be the main one for, for redevelopment. Yeah. Could be this, because otherwise, I mean, it's going to be a non-conformity until, until a change happens. And then we got to, they'd have to come up with the new standards at that point. But otherwise, uh, for what's there, it's kind of, it's kind of there until we're able to do something about it, if that makes sense.
Got it. Thank you, gentlemen. That, that was helpful.
Yeah. But to Mr. Dennis, I will say to you, kind of your, your initial point, we are looking at a lot of those things in part related to new development. So, uh, kind of, I think I'm, is, is the code on the screen? I'm not.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah. So, um, looking at this, I mean, so, uh, twenty-six dash five point one, so subsection C, a lot of that deals with those access and circulation requirements. But so what, what exactly are the sidewalk requirements? You know, so for new develop, this is, you know, this is what it is. And then, uh, five B here is what those exemptions might look like. And basically that's saying DOT, you know, DOT is going to have the, the, the say on DOT for county stuff. It's going to be, uh, the county engineer in conjunction with the zoning administrator that there's some other thing that would not necessarily make it feasible or allowable. I mean, there's a variety of standards that would need to be met with it. Um, and then I think this is one of the, kind of the, the key things right into, you know, your point about green space or open space for this, you know, so a, a trail network could be, uh, utilized in lieu of sidewalks. So to still provide that connectivity. Um, and then I guess also to your other point earlier, so you know, thinking about this connection, so that, that graphic that we've been seeing on here, so how some of those, you know, things continue on, but looking also at transit facilities. So that, you know, as these new developments occur, how might some of those transit facilities, you know, be improved upon, um, is one way to think about it. Versus just having to construct something new. Cause I think that's, I think this would in part allow that, um, if there's a stop that's already there, how do we maybe make that a little bit safer? How do we maybe upgrade that a little bit in conjunction with, uh, CMRT? So I just wanted to point that out to you, uh, as part of some of this as well.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Let me get back to here. All right.
All right. So for our, our street parking, uh, of course, you know, there, uh, we get this information based off of, you know, studies of how they general uses function, you know, kind of your peak hours and times. And, um, that's, that's where it came from. Unfortunately, it's from, you know, the early two thousand. So we changed a little bit as a society, it's how we kind of move and travel. Also new uses could have come out, uh, that weren't envisioned back then. Um, so at this point, we're updating those standards. So looking at your minimum and maximum for, uh, certain uses. Whereas in some cases even where instead of looking at a range, we're mainly looking at a max where it makes sense. You know, looking at some of those design, uh, materials, um, so encouraging of course, the use of, uh, pervious materials over impervious. Also, we've kind of simplified a little bit of as far as where our mitigation. So currently at the mid and max ranges of our current code, there are certain mitigations that have to take place as, as part of that. But it, it simplifies that moving forward. So it's a little bit clear on exactly what needs to be done. We've also looked at large parking lots. So, um, think of your, kind of your mall parking, um, you know, something like that. The idea behind that is, is rather than to have a, a sea of parking to kind of look at a way to make that where it's kind of broken up, there's, you know, logical connections, pedestrian paths, handicap spot locations, uh, things of that nature. Also just updating minor things like stacking. So think of your drive-through standards. So how the vehicles are actually, you know, lined up. Um, and then the number of spaces that they would need, that's kind of been updated. Uh, also taking the bicycle parking standards and move those to one area versus having them in different sections throughout the redevelopment code. And then we also look at, uh, some flexibility, um, for parking. The transportation domain management plan, um, is a new tool that, uh, you know, Um the transportation domain management plan um is a new tool that uh, you know, a developer or a builder could use to. Essentially kind of show that, hey, you know, the code says this, however. You know, we've got bus service, we've got, you know, this private shuttle that runs through here, we've got a number of teleworking uh. Um, you know, uh employees or, you know, something that shows that, well, you know, this is the reason why I think there should be less parking. So in that case, it provides some flexibility um for those parking standards. Um, all right, next slide.
I have a question about parking.
Sure.
So uh in the next fourteen years, uh most of the car manufacturers are projected to be all electric. Have we thought about how we can incorporate charging stations in some of these uh parking areas? To, you know, whether or not it's the, whether or not we do it here or if it's a different company that does it. Um have we looked at that?
So, and I'm just, I'm really quickly searching the code because I.
Only place that I can recall off the top of my head, Tommy, is we listed in the green incentives.
Right, yeah, for transportation.
I really off the top of my head.
Yeah, and and that's, I just pulled it up here. So while we haven't addressed it in the general standards, if a, you know. Uh builder or or, you know, some developer were to want to use these green building incentives. Um part of some of the incentives that will or the criteria that you have to meet to get certain incentives. Um is to provide uh electrical vehicle parking. Um so um and then there's certain levels of it, like you provide two charging stations, you get something from Schedule B. As a check, or if you provide uh three or more, then, you know, you get Schedule A. So there's some provisions, there's incentives to do it. Um more so than than requirements, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Uh I'd seen a little bit in there, but I didn't get to read all through the electric charging stuff. So I I just wanted to. Get a quick answer instead of me reading all through. I think it's fifteen pages, it's got all that on there. So. Thank you very much. I mean, you know, fourteen years is not that far from now. So just wanted to make sure. I mean, we're doing this now. By the time all this stuff's implemented, I mean, we're, I'm not. Going to be driving a gas car probably anymore. So just kind of putting that on the radar.
Sure, thank you. All right, Brian, you want to advance the landscaping?
Sectionals getting back to the to the presentation.
I got you.
Way back there.
So some changes to the uh landscaping section that I think that are are really worth mentioning is as far as for. Um that species diversity. Um so and then maintenance for your landscaping areas. Um, one of the things that we wanted to provide more clarity on was the the different type of species that can be used. And then the idea too that. Um, you know, you want to encourage that diversity. So if you get a disease in a certain, you know, uh tree or or plant. That it doesn't essentially wipe out your entire landscaping buffer. Um we've also tried to simplify the uh transitional buffering yard standards. So placing them in a chart, um making it a little bit easier to kind of go through and pick out what would be required. Um we've also looked at those uh street protective yards as well as the uh parking lot landscaping standards. Um just some refinements to that. Um and then looking at minimum plannings too for like around the perimeter of a building. So basically again, just. The idea to provide additional screening from adjacent roads or or right of ways or even adjacent developments. Um and then we've also looked at the uh strengthening of tree protection uh standards. So. Um, you know, a- and it kind of expanding upon the type of trees that should be protected. Um also looking at um some incentives, uh going back to those, uh, you know, the the green development incentives. You know, for protecting trees or leaving areas uh undisturbed. Uh next slide, please. So kind of getting into those open space set asides. So from the conversations that we've had, you give us some stakeholders, you know, in the community is that. You know, a lot of times they're utilizing the um, you know, open space standards to. Uh essentially achieve a lot size that makes sense from an economic standpoint, a lot size that allows them to be able to actually develop a site. Um so kind of one of the things that we looked at is is that if that's basically what people are using as your standard development. Why not go ahead and make that the standard development um with certain requirements and open space for every district? As the trade-off being whether that be uh smaller setbacks or smaller lot whiz. Um there's also some provisions within the code that again in that green uh incentive section that, you know, you achieve certain, you know. Uh checks in the box as far as for those uh green development standards. And you can also look at uh further reducing uh setbacks. Um, you know, having a much smaller front setback if you're alley loaded, so there's still access, there's still the ability for. Uh those single family users to actually park the vehicles, um, you know, for on the property. Um, you know, in the open space set asides, um as far that for the standards. Um for design, configuration and features, um it kind of really encourages uh developments to uh kind of push the houses. Not necessarily together to the point to where they're, you know, on top of each other, but uh basically to encourage for, you know, other amenities. Uh whether that be recreational, um uh open space, uh trails, uh things of that nature. Um also some uh notes on actually maintenance and who is required to maintain them. Um one of the biggest things is that we want to make sure that the counties are not maintaining, you know, common area throughout the Richland County that. It's specified on how the H O A or P A would actually uh take over that and maintain that. And then uh we also looked at some of the standards for um the natural features. Um so whether that's a, you know, grassy field or flood plain, um or a stand of mature trees. Um, you know, kind of how that will play and and how that would work towards counting towards your um open space set aside. Uh next slide, please. And then for the cluster development, you know, I mentioned this a little bit earlier.
I got it. I got it. I got a question before we go too far.
Sure.
So one, so you were talking about the, like the slide previously, the landscape requirements and buffers and stuff like that. And I remember. Okay, like Garner's Ferry, where the Walmart is. Taco Bell and stuff like that. They originally had to put in some buffers between the backs of the buildings in Garner's Ferry. And those things have been completely annihilated. It's nothing but grass now. Was that, did we change the code on them or did they just not honor it and there's no penalty?
Hmm, I would have to check and see. I thought the Walmart and Garner's Ferry, it's awful close to the jurisdictional line. So I'm going to double check. Um, but but.
Was that maybe city? I mean, I thought that was county though.
It may be, but let's see here.
I mean, I just, I I mean, to me, a lot of it, you know, is code enforcement. What are we doing about code enforcement? Because we can require the developers to do certain things, but if. A year down the road, the landscaper goes out there and just clear cuts it and there's no penalty. That's what'll happen.
And that is in the city. Um but I I in, if it were technically in Richland County, and we've had this happen. Um, uh, we had this happen when someone installed um palm trees at one time. They actually took out their required street protective yard. Um, you know, unknowingly, they 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 weren't doing it intentionally. They just didn't realize that that was part of the required landscaping. Um so we had to go back in and and have them remove those and then replant. Um so it does happen. Um it is a code enforcement issue, like you said, so.
Okay.
And one of the things that we've done too, and and this has been in current practice as well, is is kind of what we've geared some of our landscaping for is the uh. If we discourage having, you know, required landscaping buffers, um or or any kind of easements that, you know, are. Due to landscaping on private property. However, if they are, some of those provisions in there are the fact that, you know, it must be, you know, there'd be standards put in place that, you know, the residents know. That is is their responsibility to maintain that. If it's an understored buffer, then, you know, not to go in there and and, you know, remove things. But we strongly discourage that because of the fact is is that, you know, people look in their backyard and might be fenced in and they say, oh, there's this tree. I don't like it. I'm going to go plant a bunch of, I don't know, bushes or something like that. And then they take out the tree.
All right, okay. Thanks.
Absolutely. So, all right, so with the cluster development, uh one of the things that we looked at, of course, is. As we've changed and kind of moved away from the rural district, um being that, you know, we've separated it out into kind of your different levels of role. So. Like your rural transition, then you get into, of course, your A D, your homestead district, um which comes with some different standards. But to also allow for some contextually appropriate development in those areas. You don't necessarily want if, and I'll just use this for example, just just saying that like our current R U, whereas. You can have a thirty three thousand square foot lot, you know, in theory, if you if you've got fifty acres, you could chop up, you know, uh. To get so many lots up to, you know, fifty units, but you're going to be installing a road, you're going to be installing a lot of infrastructure with these large lots. So the idea behind the cluster development is, you know, by leaving large swaths uh undeveloped or or relatively untouched. Kind of moving some of that development together, you're looking more at your gross uh number and how to achieve that with, you know, reducing those. Uh impervious surfaces, reducing that road infrastructure or or any other kind of pieces that would be needed with your subdivision. Um to allow for development, but not to, again, to where you have to go through and they you basically clear cut it and then you got to put everything in around it and install buffers. So. Um, it it's it's an incentive to kind of reduce costs, but also to kind of say in certain circumstances. That, you know, um i- in those districts, you've also got a buffer and screen. So in theory, you're not putting, you know. Uh some of the complaints that we hear in some neighborhoods is that you basically the subdivision comes right up to the road. So you're looking at the back of someone's house. While you're driving down the road. And that that's not necessarily a bad thing, but i- it is a big, you know, it's a stark difference when you look over and. And see the back of the house versus you see a development where there's some kind of screening or vegetation that is, you know, thick enough to where it kind of obscures that that. Dwelling unit, um that there's not just a, you know, twenty four inch or, you know. A smaller tree that hasn't had time to mature to provide that screening, especially in the beginning, in the first few years of the development. Um so that that's one way to kind of begin to allow for some contextual, you know, character appropriate. Uh development within the more rural areas of the county. And next slide, please. So uh a- again, getting into these design informed standards, and we'd kind of touched on that a little bit earlier with my Decker Boulevard comment. Um so the idea is to, again, allow for redevelopment or new development uh for those areas, but also to provide some protection to the existing residential. Um and it also allows for some uh uses within the mixed-use districts. Um that would, you know, allow for, say, you know, maybe you've got a restaurant on the first floor. And then the second floor, you've got some kind of office. And then the third floor, you have residential. Um, you know, it'll provide for options like that. Uh it looks at kind of facades. Um so basically what side is shown to the street. Um i- is one of the decision, building spacing. So. Whereas you you have certain breaks in buildings and how they're laid out. Um also looks at uh roofs. Um so again, you're kind of looking at that, you're not necessarily having such an obscure difference between bike building heights. Um and as well as the um kind of gradation of, you know, what's appropriate. Uh almost kind of thinking that as if you were residential to this development as it kind of goes out towards the road. There should be a transition in how that's designed. Um but those M U districts are going to be mapped. Um if I'm not uh incorrect, kind of sparingly right now, um there'll be certain areas where appropriate. Uh throughout the corridor, but I think that these uh mixed-use districts in particular are going to be really key for those who are looking at doing a a different design. Than what's currently there, a single use, um you know, commercial development versus trying to incorporate some of this stuff in. Um that would allow for a wide range of residential, um institutional, um you know, office uses and then uh commercial as well.
Yeah, so I'd say to to add on to that time, I'd say this is one of those where, so for the design inform, the form is the kind of key. Aspect of what this is looking at specifically related to those mixed-use buildings. So, you know, thinking about that wa- walkability, thinking about the integration of uses. Um so you're not necessarily as worried about what that use is, but more so how that building is structured. Uh where it's more so aligned with a form-based style code uh versus the Euclidean that we've had in the past. So trying to have it more hybridization. Uh within part of these standards here. Yeah, so. Tommy?
All right, so. And then again, getting into those compatibility standards, I kind of touched on a little bit. Um so the point is is to allow that redevelopment. But also to protect that existing residential area. Um it applies to the uh non-residential districts or non-residential development, excuse me. Um and then basically it looks at the site design and features. So um looking at where your openings are going to face. Um in certain areas where appropriate, parking to the rear. Um again, some of those uses as far as for, like you said, live music, outdoor seating, kind of limiting what that is and and where that can be located on a particular site. Um and then getting into the agricultural, uh one of the 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 big things about uh having these agricultural standards. Uh is to protect working farms. Um you want to protect the viability of a, you know, uh prime farm land that i- is working, it's got. You know, agricultural uses, animal husbandry, that kind of thing. And what this does is it doesn't necessarily prohibit development, you know, to an adjacent site. So. Say John decides that, you know, it's it's time to sell the farm, you know, with. Meeting those standards, you know, it it could potentially be appropriate to develop residentially. However, you you want to have some spacing between that working farm and those uh residential uses. Uh so this provides for some uh ability to, you know, use a buffer. Um idea being that, you know, there's potentially from that working farm, maybe smell, noise, um you know, odor. Smoke, dust. So the idea is to kind of separate to eliminate any kind of compatibilities or complaints uh between the two. Um also provide some gradation, um recommendations basically from, you know, typically closer to the farm, maybe you wouldn't have. Is 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 dense or smaller lots. Um so recommending larger lots near that buffer. And then as you kind of move forward to where your your access to a public road right away or where your buffer space is. Um uh screening it from that um view that the lots become smaller.
Yeah, so I I think when one thing to really look at here with those neighborhood compatibility standards, I think it's going to. Really allow for a lot more commercial development to occur. Uh where, you know, it it wouldn't be able to otherwise under the current test. So you're thinking about, you know, like Tommy said, using that Decker example, but even, you know, some other areas. So whereas there's an intersection. Or parcels that front or residential neighborhood, you know, you're not going to have to worry as much about, you know, someone coming in, putting in a big block store. Kind of thing uh right on the front of your residential neighborhood. Similarly, you know, how could you might have certain uses? Or certain districts, you know, integrated with a residential area. So, you know, you have, you know, a a busier intersection, if you will. Um within a, you know, established residential neighborhood, but there's that want or need for, you know, some commercial. But all right. You know, you're worried about M U one going in there. Well, it's a little bit more palatable. It's a little bit more appropriate because of these standards now. Where it's still going to be scaling that use, it's going to be scaling the performance of that use to where it is much more in cohesion. With the surrounding residential character around it. So I think because of these compatibility standards. Uh it's going to allow for a lot more application of the various uh commercial districts, whether that's M U one, R C, G C. Or any of the others. Um but I think it's still, you know, for those in particular, I think it's going to allow for a lot more. Abundance or use of those districts themselves related to residential areas.
All right, so for the uh green development incentives, um again, kind of talking about that table earlier that we were talking about the electric vehicles. Um, you know, there's certain, you know, incentives um that providing, so say, for instance, you have a. Uh one of those mini units, um rather than providing, you know, a large H V A system, you know, i- it meets the rest check. And then you provide mini split units. Um that's one check I in a certain, you know, column. Uh there's technically two columns. Um and the idea is is for certain incentives, so building height, density setbacks, reduction in uh the minimum parking requirements. Um i- if you're able to meet certain things from each of that schedule, uh then you get those incentives. Um you can't necessarily double dip, but uh so if you get, let's just say, for instance, uh, you know, you are able to, you know, conserve a hundred percent of all your. Uh natural resource inventory items that are listed out on the code. Um you're able to provide those electric stations. Um you're able to provide, um let's put say, one of the other ones, a certain amount of your gray water is actually used for recycled for onsite use. You know, those are just some kind of wide-ranging examples, but that would then help allow for you to uh basically use one of these incentives. A- and it's menu based, so, you know, you can kind of pick and choose from a variety of different things. Whether it be performance standards for buildings, uh, whether it be equipment, um, or whether it's, you know, kind of using or conserving onsite. Um, uh, natural features, uh, to kind of help meet those standards. And we touched from a wide range within that table, so I mean, I think it's going to provide for a lot of flexibility. Um, you know, i- it looks at things also like lead standards, um, uh, the chip tool, which is. Kind of a a way to certify that, you know, it's a green development, um, that she's across the state of South Carolina. It's actually something locally that was suggested to us as well. Um, so I think at the end of the day, it's it's going to provide for some flexibility, um, to take advantage of those incentives. And then moving on to articles with minor changes, so this is just kind of highlighting some of those areas where we've gone through and 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 looked at. You know, just a few things we've refined this, so the transitional provisions, um, is going to be basically kind of, you know, how the code is going to function. In the in-between, so kind of what the ways are to move over from or go to the new code. Um, also looking at use regulations, so, um, and for the most part, we uh, took our table and updated it. Um, again, eliminating one of my favorite examples is videotape and disc rental stores, so not really seeing a whole lot of those, but you know, kind of providing for. Some of those more newer uses, um, and then uh, kind of how they're organized as well, um, without the land use table. Um, we've also looked at kind of how we have done principal versus accessory, so. Um, rather than kind of have accessory uses under certain provisions in the code, we've got our principal and then following it is the accessory uses. Um, and then not revising or or not carrying forward the reference to the NAICS. Um, if anyone has dealt with that with us, um, in the past, our code actually references uh, the two thousand two. Um, there have been various iterations since then of updated NAICS codes. Um, the the only way to kind of get around that is is for every time they release the NAICS code is to do a text amendment, so. When the recommendations was mainly to define uses, um, versus referencing a document that's ever changing. Uh, and we've also looked at some of those requirements and use standards within the chart, again, refining those for what we know works best now. Um, and then the subdivision standards, um, you know, some slight stuff as far as we're referencing. Um, and then uh, block sizes as well, so looking at kind of where's before, we didn't necessarily have a block size requirement. Um, there's been some recommendations as far as for how long this block should be, um, as far as for maximums and minimums. Um, and then of course, our kind of our rules of construction and rules of measurement, um, that's kind of getting more to the administrative side, so. Um, you know, kind of of how we uh, look at measuring certain uses for those requirements. Um, how do we look at kind of how things are set up and and how they kind of function? Uh, provided clarity and also consolidated some of that stuff all into one, so it's not multiple uh, locations. Uh, throughout the Richland County Land Development Code. Um, and then with that, I believe we're getting into the remapping process. Um, and then of course, um, I get Mr. Crooks in our court, both be doing this, I think primarily he'll be talking about it. Um, but I'm still here to answer any questions.
Yeah, so I I did want to point out uh, one thing right here, so article four, I think that may be a specific article that you all as a planning commission. May have a more specific interest in, uh, you know, kind of related to your 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 major duties and functions. That you all kind of look at on a regular basis, you know, linking about these zoning districts, but zoning districts, you know, that that layering. But then those districts, we have these uses, but then those uses, we have the standards, so kind of as we mentioned earlier, you know, looking at some of those different components. So if there's specific uses that you think we should be taking a look at or things like that, you know, just let us know. Or if we had need to have another work session entirely, um, for whatever reasons, um, or to look at things specifically, you know. Particularly, you know, the use tables, zoning districts, things like that, I think that's always, you know, that's that's always an option. Um, so I just wanted to point that out related to, you know, the use regulations and just want to make sure that you guys, uh, you know. Take a, take a look at some of those, I know Mr. Dennis, you already mentioned that you're taking a, taking a look at some of those, um, but I think just the body as a whole, um, if you guys would take a look at that. Uh, I think that could definitely be uh, something that you all m- may have an interest in. But so for this next little section, we just kind of wanted to briefly talk about the remapping process. Um, really kind of looking at what we've been doing, how we've been doing it, what that looks like, uh, because we are still ongoing with this. Um, and so we're not really too too far along at a point where, you know, we're we're going to be releasing too much. But I think, uh, this week we are meeting with uh, county council to have a work session on this mapping process. And so we've been meeting with them individually, so now we're going to be coming to them as a whole, uh, to kind of have a little bit more broader discussion and overview. And so I think once we have, once we have that and we begin some of the next iteration. I think at that point, we would be able to come back to you all with some draft information at that point. To really get a look at how some of these things may be working. Um, so just kind of wanted to go over this a little bit in terms of what that process looks like. Um, and how we've been really going about this remapping.
Mr. Crook?
Yeah.
Um, when you guys were talking to county council, is there any way for us to sit in on that?
Oh, so the the work session is going to be, I believe, streamed on the YouTube page, so you would be able to watch on there.
Alright, uh, can you just send us that link out when it's there?
Sure.
Alright, thank you.
So the, so the remapping process, so, uh, so obviously this the code rewrite is very much a two-part process. So we've got the text and then we've got the map. And so, you know, the text is really just this one piece of the puzzle, and so, uh, you know. It's one of the things where the text really comes first in everything that you're doing, because without the text, you can't build the map because the text references the map. The map is built off the language that the text has, et cetera, et cetera, and so, you know, looking at that, section twenty six dash one point eight sets forth. That official zoning map, and so again, this is going to be looking at the where the zoning regulations exist and where they are applied. Um, and so, you know, all of this is interrelated in terms of that process. Um, because as we've going forward with this, the the text process, we're able to get more information. We're being able to do a little bit more with that map to have that something that's ready as this text process continues on. Because obviously as changes occur to the text, changes may happen with map. So as, you know, standards for a zoning district are changed, that's going to impact the recommendations that we're going to have. For the map, so if we had one area mapped as R one, but then we significantly, you know, increase the density from one point three three to three. Well, that's going to change the way that we look at how we were recommending that area be mapped. Um, and so a lot of that is, you know, all of that mapping process is really dependent upon this text. And so one thing that we want to note in particular here is the interest in the map versus the text. Um, I think, I know that's one thing that we're always, we've always heard as part of this process, uh, even going back to, you know. When we released module one back in twenty eighteen, uh, you know, it's been one of those things where, well, what about the map? Where's the map at? I want to say, you know, uh, we want to see the map. Um, you know, that's been a common, common thing that we've heard from a variety of stakeholders, um, a variety of groups and things like that, but. You know, the map's one of the things we can't do until you have the text really done. Um, and so we expect to see a lot more interest, um, with the map than we've had seen with the text previously. Um, so we know that's something that that will definitely going to be happening, um, in relation to it versus what, uh. The interest that we've seen in the text so far. So, you know, what what have we been doing and and how is this happening? Um, so, you know, with the remapping process, we've been, we've developed eight principles for how we're going about remapping. And so what these principles do, and these are over here on the uh, right side of the slide. You know, so it sets forth the guidelines for how we should be undertaking the map. And so what this does is it functions as the big ideas and rationale behind the why. Which leads into the how for the mapping, so, you know, the the principles really look at these overarching elements of the why and the what we're looking to do. Which lead into building these rules for how we actually do the mapping itself. So ultimately, the remapping is a technical exercise of going through the old map and creating an entirely new map for the county. So it's going to be following rules for how to look at things such as lot sizes, land use, et cetera, based on where things are located. And then these rules are derived from the principles themselves, and so the mapping is ultimately a very time intensive process. Uh, this has been something that we've been really been working on, uh, in detail, um, for a couple of months. Uh, but it's also one of the things where we can't really get too far along because we are reliant upon what that text says. So as things change to the text, things change to the map, and that also affects how we're looking at some of these rules in some cases. Because that kind of shifts things in some ways or one or the other, based on what those uh, standards are and what some of those uses may look like. And so ultimately, what this does is it leads into an iterative process. Um, and so we have gone, we're expecting to go through about five iterations for this map. And so we've gone through, uh, we're currently in the fourth iteration right now, which is what we'll be talking with county council with on Thursday. Um, and so each one of those different iterations has been based on a different set of rules. And so each, each iteration has X rule and then into iteration two adds new rules to this. And so, you know, each one kind of builds off the other in terms of this process, and so ultimately, it's about undertaking edits, undertaking revisions. Until we get something that we know we're really comfortable with, we're really happy with, um, that can be presented to you all, can be presented to the public. And what will ultimately be asking county council and you all to vote on. Um, and so, uh, in terms of this, uh, kind of giving you an idea timeline wise. Yeah, I mentioned we're uh, having this work session with county council on Thursday, so from there. Um, it's going to be making some further revisions and edits as part of this next iteration. As well as incorporating some of the changes based on the text itself from the consolidated draft. To the public hearing draft, and then so from there, uh, once we make those revisions. Go through as part of the fifth iteration, see what additional uh, changes need to be made based on those set of rules. And then ultimately look to have a final draft, which is what we would be presenting to the public. And so, uh, really what we're shooting for is a release sometime in July or August, once the text has been adopted. So that way, any revisions to the text, we can make sure we incorporate with the text itself. Uh, excuse me, any changes to the text, we can make, we can make edits to the map and how those that is being recommended. So that's really kind of what we're looking at in terms of the remapping process. Um, but in terms of, you know, how that looks, want to get the text adopted first and then have that map available, vote on the map. And then that process will likely be, the adoption process would likely be occurring in the fall. Um, so that's really kind of what we're looking at here, but I think depending on how that conversation goes on Thursday with council. I think eventually, once we're a little bit further along with the text, um, once we have that fifth iteration, so prior to that final draft. I think, you know, we might have something that we could bring back before you all to generate some more discussion and things like that. Um, but that's really kind of it with the mapping process. Um, so, you know, wanted to open it up to any additional discussion, comments, questions that you all might have related to the text. Or anything else we've discussed so far as part of this. And don't everybody jump up at once.
Um, I'll say this, uh, uh, I think this presentation is very good, um. And you guys answered a lot of my questions that I had, um, because I'm definitely looking more towards the future. Um, only because I've been following the infrastructure bill and uh, things like that and seeing how we can utilize. And get on board with that, um, for the future. Um, I do like how it gives us and it gives property owners a um, different way to use their land. I I do like that, uh, especially in the rural areas, uh, the residential areas, you know, and that stuff's pretty straightforward residential. Commercial stuff, but the rural, um, areas where I get a lot of people asking me about, and I'm I'm glad that that opens it up for them. And makes it a little more easier for them to actually use their land. Um, and I just wanted to reiterate, you guys have done a fabulous job providing this to us. Um, I'm pretty sure I'm going to have more questions because I'm only on page three hundred of five sixty nine right now. Um, so, I mean.
That happens.
Yeah, I mean, I I skimmed over it and uh, that's how I got those other questions, but now I'm digging more in-depth into it and writing down some questions. But right now, I I, you guys answered my big ones, um. The other one I have though is how is the city of Columbia? Stuff going, are they going to mirror anything or are we working this together with them? Because I know there's a lot of areas that mix. Um, and I don't want to look too.
Different.
So are you looking at in terms of the text or the map or both or? Kind of like, you know, the transition areas, like, you know, where.
That's a good point, um, Tommy, I think I'll let you tackle that first and I'll jump in.
Sure, so at least initially, uh, even kind of prior to this process even starting during the twenty fifteen uh, comp plan update. Uh, one of the things that we looked at doing is along those areas where, you know, basically the city and and the county boundaries touch. Is that we tried to mirror that future land use uh, map classification to kind of mirror what is, you know, kind of on the other side, so to speak. Um, so a lot of it that you'll see and I'm glancing up at my land use map on the wall right now, so I'm not staring off into space, but. Like along the borders, especially in the Beltway, so thinking of that main kind of corridor going around the city. A lot of that's identified as uh, mixed residential, um, some mixed use corridor. Um, i- if if you get a chance, um, check out the city of Columbia's viewer on weplantedgether.org. Um, that since they're actually in their mapping stage, they have a viewer that shows their old district. Our zoning district or the current, excuse me, versus the proposed one. Um, we are uh, looking at doing a similar, um, kind of viewer, uh, Mr. Brooks has been working with our GIS. Um, to kind of get that developed, so once we get to that mapping stage, um, we should have that digitally available, so you can kind of guy, kind of go through and manipulate it. Also potentially even looking at the cities and comparing, but the idea is, um, when we're sitting down doing these mapping exercise exercises. You know, i- it wouldn't, you wouldn't go through and arbitrarily, you know, change zoning to something that would be completely incompatible with what's in the city. It may not be apples to apples, but it should be pretty close.
Yeah, the reason why I was just asking, you know, there's, I I would hate for like a commercial area to have a building. Set back different, I mean, just totally doesn't look right, you know what I mean? Just kind of totally off, um, because I mean, the. I'm definitely for having the city of Columbia and Richland County separated, but at the same time, I mean, we're doing this for beautification. We're doing this to get people in, businesses in, um, you know, we do have to work with them.
So there's.
Things go forward.
There's like, there's there's some provisions within the code itself or like things like that, where, you know, it, the the setback between one. You know, this, so you got your parcel here and then the two beside you, you know, one's way up and one's way back, well, then you kind of meet in the middle kind of thing. So there's various provisions like that, and it's the same way, things like compatibility standards, things, you know, the the various general development standards. You know, as relates to what a use is or what an adjacent use is or things like that, it looks at the most equivalent of, so if it's in another jurisdiction. What the most equivalent of that would be, so, you know, if it's something where, you know, the the use is going to be a use. And we may not have it identified specifically within our code, but if they have it, you know, it's it's always just one of those things where most stuff is covered. In somewhere or the other, um, but we just don't, it's not necessarily as explicit, um, if that makes sense.
That makes perfect sense, thank you very much for that.
Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Crooks and Mr. Glage, let me, uh, Stephen here, let me thank you, uh, as well for just a fine job and a fine presentation today. Uh, I tell you what, it's just so interesting to hear so much uh, that's gone into this from its inception to now. And uh, we certainly could not have uh, made it thus far without uh, not only input from commissioners, but also from our community. And the fine work that our staff and consultants have done, so I I I'll echo Mr. Dennis's comments that I'm going through the document. And uh, we'll certainly probably have some additional comments about uh, the plan, but for now, I I certainly want to commend you for a job well done, for sure. Um, one, one question I do have, um, the, the, the consultants, are they done with this now?
Uh, no. So one of the things that, and so the way that we're kind of approaching it now is, so it's, it's, it's our turn to drive, if you will. Um, so they're, they're still working with us, but it's more so behind the scenes in terms of. Uh, you know, working on the document, things like that, what changes need to be made, such as that. But in terms of. You know, now it's really kind of handed the process off to us where we're at a stage now where, you know. Let's look at it for how we're going to be using it, how we're going to be applying it versus, you know, them looking at it from, oh, what changes might we need to make? Or what things should we be looking at? So versus us taking the lead, driving the process versus them, if, if that makes sense. And Tommy, I. If you wanted to add anything, I feel like you might be able to characterize it a little bit better, but.
Oh, no, not necessarily better, but I mean, they're still in a supportive role to us. So they haven't, they haven't uh, cashed the check and gone out of town. So.
No, that's great. No, I, I appreciate that. And number to Crooks, that was, that was a fine um, um. Synopsis of, of where, where we are. Uh, so. Next steps on this is what? Now, I know council, you'll be meeting with council here in the next few days. Is that right?
Yeah. So, so again, you know, thinking about the two separate processes. So one with the tax, one with the map. And so. Text is where we're at now. So really the next step is to continue some of these engagement meetings. So next week, starting on Monday and running through Friday, we're going to be having various public forums. So these are going to be opportunities for the public to basically kind of get this same presentation again. Ha, allow them to answer any or ask any questions, uh, opportunities that they have uh, about, you know. What this code is going to be, well, it's going to tell what these differences might look like. Uh, so four different opportunities that they can take advantage of. Uh, as well as a meeting with our larger stakeholder groups. So uh, a stakeholder group made up from the uh, environmental community. A stakeholder group made up of the development and business community, uh, stakeholder group from our uh. I'm blanking on through, uh, service providers is what we're calling them. And so those would be like things like other local governments, other jurisdictions. DOT, DHEC, places like that. Um, as well as our advisory committee, um, that has been involved throughout this process. Um, so meeting with those different groups um, in entities uh, to again, kind of talk about this similarly, see what concerns they have, see what comments they have. Uh, what issues they might see, um, you know, questions they have is how stuff would be, you know, looked at, applied, et cetera, things like that. So that's really kind of the next step. And then after it, we will be coming back before you all at the June seventh meeting uh, to. Look at voting on this uh, before it goes to county council. Um, so that's kind of step two. And then following it would be first reading at the zoning public hearing uh, by county council at the June twenty-second meeting. Um, so it's a really, you know, that's kind of the timeframe that we're working under where ultimately this uh, could be adopted. Uh, by kind of mid-July is kind of what we're looking at, uh, close near the end of July prior to council's recess. And then at that time, that kind of ends the process for the text. So once it is adopted, would it be effective until? Uh, January twenty twenty-two is probably what we're looking at timeline wise. And so between the adoption of the text. We finished the mapping process, hold the engagement on it. And then go through that adoption process likely sometime in the fall. Um, so probably starting sometime in September, October, having that map done finalized before the end of the year. And then come uh, January, we start working under the new code.
Got it. And um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes, sir.
Um, and um, the, so that, that, thank you for that synopsis. Can you send us over a copy of the stakeholder meetings that you'll be having?
Yeah, I, I think so, Tommy.
Yeah. So.
Great.
Definitely send that board.
I have something to echo on a Commissioner Gilchrist, Chairman Gilchrist's uh, thing with that. Um, these uh, joint stakeholders and stuff like that. Um, when we get that sent over, is there any way that we can sit in on the meetings? Because a lot of questions that we, that I would have. Would probably be answered by hearing their concerns. And then I think, you know, for everyone that I could make, that would actually take a. Questions off the table for you guys and make it a little more streamlined, I think. Uh, I, I would love to have that option just to hear them. Um, and not really ask a lot of questions, but just kind of hear what they're thinking. So that when we're looking at it, I can get the whole picture instead of asking you, then you guys going back to them if they say something, you know, and just kind of. Can get the context all together. Is that something we can do?
So we could definitely look at our options. Uh, traditionally kind of, you know. A year and a half ago, we would have it and it would just be open and the stakeholders, you know, would essentially be there, but it, it would never close to the public. So we can kind of look to see what the options are. Um, some of the groups are, I don't want to say large because it depends on participation. So. Um, we can look at that as far as we're um, potentially either it being directly assumed invite or, you know, how we may. Uh, stream it or whatever platform we may use. So we can take a look at that and see what kind of what our options would be.
Thank you. And, and you know, if it can't be done, if eh, if they have a lot of questions and you guys answer them, if there's any way we could get a copy of the. Questions and answers, I, I think that would also help us move along reading this, because I mean, there's a lot in here. And there's a lot that people are going to be asking questions about and, and I'm one of those guys, I like to know what I'm doing. Um, and seeing the whole broad. Aspect of it.
Yes, so Mr. Guinness, so, so one thing that, that we're looking to do is basically uh, kind of. Build a larger comment sheet as well as what we would recommend related to this. So there's already going to be, there's already things in, in, in here. That we're looking at, okay, we might need to refine further. We might need to make some other changes. So some things that we can already go ahead and identify will probably be. N- pointing those out to y'all as y'all are making y'all's initial recommendation to county council. And so a lot of those things are going to be coming from the stakeholder meetings. Uh, because we'll have about a week, I, I think it's a week difference between when we have them and then when we come before you all. And so we'll be able to take a look at some of those things. At, you know, what, what makes more sense to look at, what doesn't. And so basically having kind of a, a, an abbreviated. Uh, comment list and what we think we need to address, um, what we think, you know, that's already addressed, that's, that's something that. Uh, maybe not be a, a relevant comment kind of and stuff like that. And so we'll basically have, you know, what additional recommendation or changes are. That we can provide to county council. Because I believe after, after we have the reading with y'all. I believe we're going to be having a work session later on that week with council prior to their first reading, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then I think we're going to have another one following their first reading. So basically. Repeating that process after each of the, the main public meeting sections.
Yeah, I, I just, I just wanted to bring that up because you guys are doing a tremendous amount of work. And I think that would just be one way to kind of help. You guys not be the middleman all the time and just kind of get some of the context upfront and hopefully speed this process up in the long run. Instead of us getting it on the seventh and then have some questions that would run it and then maybe have to have another special call. Meeting if, if something crazy happened, um, uh, just kind of, I'm ready to move this thing forward. I'm, I'm ready to kick tires like fires, as we used to say in the air force. Um, I'm, I'm ready to roll with it.
Got you. I understand. Any other, any other questions, comments? No, well, all right. Well, I think that's, that's really it from us. Um, as I mentioned, you know, we're going to be looking to. Uh, yeah, we're going to be bringing this before you all at the next planning commission meeting at, on the seventh. And then next week, we're looking to have these engagement opportunities. Also, you know, opportunities for citizens to. Uh, you know, engage with us one-on-one. They can schedule a meeting, you know, through our online appointment application. Um, that's on the county homepage. You can call uh, Tommy or myself, you can email Tommy or myself, you can even call or email. Uh, you know, the, the main planning line um, to schedule that appointment. But we'll be, you know. Open to have appointments throughout the entire adoption process. So, you know, it's, it doesn't have to be before, you know, first reading of a planning commission meeting. It can be after, but yeah, that's, I mean, those are kind of going to be your part of the two main input points. Uh, so I mean, it's helpful to have those before that, but, but again, uh, you know, we're, 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 we're looking to, to. Continue on this process, get it done, but we want to make sure we do it right too. So.
Yes, sir. Noah, thank you again uh, for all of your efforts, for sure.
All right. All right. Well, thank you, Commissioners. We appreciate your time. Uh, if y'all have any questions uh, that y'all want to ask, you know, feel free to reach out to us individually. Uh, and if it's something that we feel like, you know, need to bring back before the body as a whole, we can definitely try to call another uh, work session. Um, as needed. Um, but I, I guess based on comment and feedback so far, I, I think it sounds like uh. Commission is relatively comfortable with what we're proposing so far.
Last thing, is there a way for us to get a copy of these slides?
Yeah, I can send that out.
Okay, good. That way I can plug my notes and my answers on to them instead of this sheet of paper I got over here. It'd be helpful to me. Thank you.
Yeah.
Right.
All right. All right. Well, thank you all, Commissioners. Um, hope you all have a great rest of your evening and we appreciate your time today.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank y'all very much.